Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Wednesday, November 30th, 2005. This evening, City Council is meeting in special session, so it is an abbreviated agenda. All of the first, one, two, three, four, five, six ordinances, address basically the same way, but have to be in separate ordinances. I will read them all at once, and then, Member Phillips will speak to them. We do have a quorum with six of seven members present. Ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 10905, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter IX, Point 12, Streets and Sidewalks. Ordinance 11005, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title XXIII, Zoning, Chapter XXIII, Point 06, Administration of Zoning Code. Ordinance 11105, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title XXVII, Land Development, Chapter XXVII, Administration. Ordinance 11205, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 20, pardon me, Title 31, Building Regulations, Chapter 31.08, Plumbers. Ordinance 11305, an ordinance amending Resolution R0200, Revocable License. And the last ordinance in this series, ordinance 11405, an ordinance amending Ordinance O14103, Establishing Fees as Required by the Athens City Code. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, this series of ordinances...
Move to adopt.
Sorry, of all of them at the same time?
Yes.
I think I'm going to speak to them, and then we'll move to adopt one at a time.
That would be better.
Okay, so, the series of ordinances grew out of a discussion that we had about a whole variety of permit fees that were discussed in a study performed by Maximus for the city, where they looked at the actual cost of services compared to the money that we were recovering for the permits in providing those services in a variety of different areas. So, in each of those different parts of the code, there were fees set. The first, two, three, four, five ordinances actually changed those sections of code so that they refer to one place in the city code where all of the fees are established. So, they simply say that the permit fee will be established by separate ordinance, and then O11405 actually sets the permit fee levels. We discussed all of those. At first reading, we went through line by line what each one of those changes is. They are available for people to look at if people want to. Out of the recommendations from Maximus, we are still going to talk further about the alarm permit fees and about the PUD review fees, so we're going to come back to those later. This implements all of the other ones with the changes that we put in place around revocable permits for use of the right-of-way and the appeals for variances to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Those two, we adopted different levels than what had been recommended by Maximus after discussion in committee. So, Mr. President, I move adoption of O10905.
Second.
With the discussion and explanation of the ordinance, is there any further discussion on ordinance 10905? Member Patterson.
I'm actually just going to make a comment on all of them while we're in the process, because at least ever since I've been on council, there's been discussion of the fact that our code department wasn't in a situation where the fees and fines and so on were paying for the operation of that office, and that we should be aiming for closer balance there. And Maximus kind of gave us the science for that, so that we can look at that study and have some basis for specific changes, so it would be less random than just saying, "We need more money, therefore, we need to raise such and such a rate." So, it's with great appreciation that we had this methodology to go about these fee changes, and I think they're a really good thing.
Further discussion on ordinance 109. Paul.
No?
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 10905?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O11005.
Second.
Is there further discussion on the ordinance? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11005?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O11105.
Is there further discussion on the ordinance? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11105?
Aye.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O11205.
Second.
Is there further discussion on the ordinance? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11205?
Aye.
Those in opposition? The ordinance has been adopted.
I move adoption of O11305.
Second.
Yeah, second. Hard to keep up.
Boy, when we step out of our usual rhythm and patter, it doesn't work. Try as we might. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 11205. Is there further discussion? 11305, is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11305?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted.
I move adoption of O11405.
Second.
Is there further discussion on the ordinance? Paul?
This is the one where we set some of the fees. Most of them are going up, some of them are going down. And again, this is in response to the study, Maximus did.
Mr. President, I would actually add that the two that we did a different level than recommended, we went lower than what they recommended. So, I think that we're well within the range of what's reasonable in all of the ones that have increased, and the places where we didn't go with their recommendation, we actually thought they were recommending something that was too much of an increase, and so we went with a lesser amount.
Further discussion?
Could you refresh my memory why we're not doing the PUDs?
There's some information that there already was a fee in place, and we just need to look at that.
Okay.
We just needed to look at more information about what's already in place and see whether that might be acceptable.
You mean in 099, or whatever it was?
I think it's in O141, O3. It's already in there.
And we've been collecting it all along?
No. We have not.
Okay, so what do we have to do, start collecting it?
Well, first you have to decide on the fee. I think the fee that's there is inappropriate.
So, we need to look at that compared to what...
It was brought up at the last Planning Commission meeting, that there's a discrepancy there, and that something needs to be looked at.
I think when we looked through the subdivision regs in more detail, that was in a different location in the code, and so it didn't come to our attention at that time, and we just need to look at it in relation to subdivisions and PUDs.
Right now, it's free, then?
Not in code, but in practice, I believe that it has been.
And that's what it said on our sheet, was zero, but that isn't what's in the code.
So, if it's in the code, why isn't it collected, I wonder?
That's a good question.
That's a good question. Mayor, if it's in the code, why isn't it collected?
I'd have to look into it. I mean, I know that we've been telling the current ones coming in for PUDs. The last PUD I think we had was the one that Diversified Properties did Herald Square, and I don't remember exactly when we did that.
Because this would have been 2003. It's just not into effect, so we may not have done any.
But we did do Herald Square, NCR.
Well, let's see, part of it depends upon when it started, through the Planning Commission and everything else. So, I'd have to go back through the records and see if there's one we didn't. But what that fee is, is there's a base charge, and then there's a per-unit charge. And there's a fee for both the preliminary approval, and then there's a fee for going to the final approval. There's a different set of work circumstances in both of them.
And I believe Ed did this, didn't he? Wasn't this Ed's work? Didn't Ed propose it? Am I wrong?
I have to go back and look.
Okay. I just was wondering why it wasn't being collected, I think. I mean, it's not, nothing is free, I think, except PUDs in Athens, I guess.
Well, I think the only thing that's conflicting in some ways is that there are sections there in the code that when you're going through a PUD or even a subdivision, all of the engineering fees and such are passed on to the developer, and that was a change council made some time ago.
I remember it well.
Then there's another section of the code that talks about this fee, which is potentially maybe larger than the fee for the engineering. It's above and beyond. We've been doing the engineering, the other, I just have to look at the dates and what PUDs there were to see if they have. And I made a note, and I will.
Thank you.
So, we will talk more about that, but it's not being handled in this ordinance?
Right, and, thank you.
If I'm correct, we have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 11405. Is there further discussion on the ordinance? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11405?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 11605, an ordinance amending Ordinance O5105 to meet city obligations in a sewer fund by amending the 2005 appropriation ordinance. Member Bain.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O11605.
Second.
O11605 moves money into the fund that we use to pay off our obligations, and it's a, I suppose I could say housekeeping matter, but I don't know if it really is. I'll say that, hope I get away with it.
It's so the sewer balance will, or the sewer fund will balance.
Hence, the name "housekeeping balance."
Right.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 116? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 11705, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of chlorine, fluoride, salt, caustic soda, and sulfur dioxide. Member Bain.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O11705.
Second.
O11705 is annual purchasing ordinance, and we try to get it done in time for the first of the year, and we're going to make it, I guess, thanks to this special session.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11705?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 11805, an ordinance authorizing the cleaning and repair or water wells, I believe that should say of water wells. Member Bain.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O11805.
Second.
Another annual event is cleaning our water wells, and that's what we're proposing to do with O11805.
Further discussion? Paul?
Again, a discussion with a member of the employer of the city, who was talking to the people cleaning the wells last time, was saying there was a more cost-effective way of doing this. I don't know what that method is. I don't clean water wells, but this is something we might want to bounce off again.
I called and talked to Crystal at the water plant, relayed the comment, and she said that she would review the bid documents and talk to the previous contractor to see what their comment meant. She said that we did use a different method a number of years ago, but they didn't like the results of it.
Oh, okay.
So, she's checking it out for us. She hasn't gotten back to me yet.
Thank you, thanks.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11805?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 11905, an ordinance authorizing the mayor dinner into a contract with the Soil and Water Conservation District. Member Bain.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O11905.
Second.
Mr. President, I believe this is one of the more unique items that we pay a small amount for each year. We do have several issues with our soils, both in the floodplain and on the hill slope, so this is a pretty decent investment. It gives citizens the ability to go and check out, developers' ability to check out in a specific way what could be potential issues with their developments or houses.
Further discussion on ordinance 119? All those, Paul?
I think this is a service that should be used, and I'm glad it's there.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11905?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. The next item on our agenda is an adjournment. Having addressed all items on tonight's special session, we are now adjourned, following council, our two short committee meetings, hopefully. One, the City Services Committee, and then the Transportation Committee. Chair of the City Services Committee, Nancy Bain.
Mr. President, thanks to the mayor for reminding me that we had never really done sewer extensions before, and that we did need policy, so this time was a fortunate time for us. You have policy guidelines down, and those are listed as possibilities, and I'd like to go through those. Those would become the whereses in the document, in any ordinance that we would put forward. So, these are some that my, since I missed the PUD thing, I'm not sure, I always listen very well, but these are things that I thought I heard people say. Must have city water service. Owner agrees to pay all costs associated with the extension and maintenance of a sewer line to the property. Assurance that the line installation performed by the owner meets city specification. The tap is limited to a single, should we say, residential dwelling. That was, that's what it says in the water tap. Water tap is probably obvious, because you could have a substantial drain on a not very able pipe. The city shall impose a two-year time limit from the date of adoption of the ordinance to allow the extension. Property must be contiguous to the city corporate line. Owner agrees to annexation of the property within a two-year period from the date of adoption of the ordinance. The only thing that I remember in addition to that is they would pay the difference between out of and inside in that interim period before they're actually annexed.
That sounds like a good addition.
Okay, so, anybody with, Carol?
My question would just be, what happens if the property does not become annexed? It says that they have to annex within two years. Sometimes annexations are turned down, sometimes, you know, a variety of things could happen, so my what-if is, what if it doesn't become annexed?
They'll pay more money. Maybe we should...
Pay more money?
Pay more money. Maybe we should increase the amount of additional cost to 20% instead of 10% as an incentive. I don't know. Maybe it's not a, I don't have a general experience with this. Occasionally, I've done water expansions. I guess I'd like to say that, and I'm going to see what Bill has to say here in a moment, but I'd like to have the sewer line in the street, or else, I guess they're going to build it if it's not in the street, so it's maybe non-issue.
Nancy, I was around when you introduced ordinance 3395, and it has served the city well on the occasions that I've seen those things come before the city. You know, it is in everybody's best interest to, A, provide clean water and sanitary sewers. It's in everybody's interest. And I think everything that you've outlined is a good idea. I would just ask a couple of questions. One, why would we want to limit it to only residential?
I guess that...
If there is a business or, you know, small industry that would be on our borders that would want the same things, and we're willing to meet all of our requirements...
And willing to be annexed.
Absolutely. Now, that is, that is the big key. And the one thing, a friend of mine for years was on Galaplis City Council, and Galaplis found itself providing city services to Spring Valley and everything outside of the city, and all of a sudden found nobody was willing to be annexed because they had all the services. Why should they pay their income tax? And Galaplis, in the last couple of years, is no longer a city and is now a town, because eventually people move out of all inner-city center kind of situations into the outskirts, you know?
They don't like paying taxes either, so it's a deal for...
So, the idea of the old-boy network thing of giving water to Wonder Hills without having Wonder Hills annex into the city is a very, very bad long-term policy. So, I agree with your annexation things, and I guess, Carol, why wouldn't council be able to either, A, extend it, or B, pull the plug?
I was, I think it's a good point. Her point is good, and I've got a note down here about her what-if, and what could Gary put on it to strengthen it or to tighten up a little?
Yeah, you know, because we've all seen recent attempts by people to get annexed, and through no fault of their own, or maybe whatever, it didn't happen. Fumbles, whatever, you know?
A couple of things. In terms of annexation, do we really, most of the time, annex single-family dwellings, residentials? I mean, most of the time, it's like, what's less, one parcel would be, what, either Motel Eight or Highway Patrol?
River Valley School.
River Valley School? Okay, so, these are not single-family, this is not a residential, these are businesses. And if we were going to, you know, somebody was going to come along, we had this one, what, last night, Clover Lane, or something like that, in terms of a subdivision coming in. They're not, it's being limited here to say, tap is limited, yes, but, you know, this would be a conglomeration of various houses.
And in those cases, we would really be bringing in tax money, income tax revenue.
The other thing, in terms of, you're talking about the 10% increasing it, maybe the thing to do would be put something in where it doubles after five years or something, or four years. In other words, keeps going up and ratcheting up until they do get annexed as an incentive. I mean, that's one alternative. The other one you're saying is put some teeth in it from Gary's point of view, but, or pull the plug, which would be...
Which probably wouldn't be done, because I think they would have put the money in, and they'd get us.
Right, that doesn't make sense.
But at the same time, if you say, okay, you know, first two years, you're paying the difference of 10%, after that, the next two years, you're paying 20%, the next two years after that, you're paying another 20% after that, or whatever. I don't really care what scale you put on it, but the incentive is to get moving.
So, we have that incentive-based, the one thing I think will be the major impediment is, number one, must have city water service. And I was listening to the mayor talk about C8, and it's, and so I was thinking, oh, dear.
And I wonder what, with the LEAC's implications that we suffered over the years, would allow the people that say are asking for water today, or sewer today, would they be able to have city water?
Well, there are a couple of locations within the city that don't have city water, particularly on the far east end of town, three or four residences, I think mostly on Della Drive, that are served by a different water system, but they also don't have sewer. And it just existed at the time of the annexation, and it was never, never done. Now, those in that case, probably since they're already in the city, we would want to provide that. And we, but it is a policy, it isn't saying that you can't grant variance to it by council under exceptional circumstances, so, but it does give the guidelines and be able to say to someone, because administratively, we're the one that gets the question first, and we're going to say, well, the council has the guidelines, let's look them over. And then, if they say, well, I don't quite meet those, what can I do? I think you can go to council and ask for a waiver from it, but it'd have to be a specific ordinance of council. It would be anyway, meeting the guidelines, but that can, that can happen.
So, the variance would go through council as opposed to, you know, one of the other...
Well, I don't know. All water extensions have come through council.
It would, because all water extensions have come through you.
I'm just asking, I'm not complaining.
Yep.
So, variation on the usual...
If it was already in the city, that would be an example where somebody would come and say, this is what's exceptional, we're already in the city, and we don't have sewer.
Rick, do you have any thoughts on what mechanism you'd have to charge for a sewer if you didn't have a water tap? I mean, we discussed this, what, two weeks ago?
Well, you'd have to...
Two days ago.
Two days ago.
You'd have to have the cooperation of the water provider to give us meter readings that they're billing for the water. The problem only comes in in the respect that if the people don't pay, then there's nothing really to turn off.
Oh, yes, there is.
You know?
I think it's slower country than doing.
Well, the other part of it is, once you have, usually you've been forced, if you've abandoned your septic system to do that, it's probably because the EPA is required, or you have large problems in that area with your leach bed not being, the expense of going to replace it is cheaper for you in the long run to go ahead and hook into a city system.
Lot size can be so much smaller, cannot it?
Well, you've got some situations where, River Valley is a good example, they wanted to come into the city for sewer primarily. They have never installed, they were never able to install it because of its cost, because they needed a pump station, a grinder pump there to get it up to our level. So, there are some areas of the city, just because of the topography, that they're lower than what the sewer line is. So, it's going to be at that expense of that property owner to pump it to us. And they'd have to maintain that pump.
And we don't have many grinder pumps, do we?
No.
No, so, so, any issues with this, or should we go forward with Mr. Endex, at least? We can communicate to the other two.
I'd go forward with Mr. Endex, Clover Lane. He's already verbally agreed to these conditions.
Does anyone see, Mayor, anyone on council say anything we need to add in addition to what's here?
Well, I kind of, I want to reiterate or reinforce whoever had a question about restricting the tap to a residential dwelling. I think we should have language in there that's broader, or instances when it's not a residence.
Or user unit, or something like that? Or similar user unit?
I think of some of the development that I'm thinking on the east side could be very large, and I'm wondering how are they going to handle their sewer? I'm wondering, do we want this to...
They're going to come into the city, Bill.
They have to, well...
I mean, that one is way beyond this ordinance, this is just...
This is to help somebody immediately, well, and...
Set a guideline.
Have them down the road.
Because we didn't use our guidelines when we talked to the highway garage, remember? I mean, they were, the administration came to us with a proposal. I mean, it was much more complex than this little thing. So, what kind of language do you want, Jim?
I don't know.
Single... Or other structure? Other tap-using structure?
If you said business, it could be like huge, half a city.
Yeah, which...
They get charged more, they use more water.
Yeah. They have a, they have a matrix they use to establish this tapping.
You'd never want the huge development that we're all thinking of not making, to not come into the city.
But then it says, number two, it says, owner agrees to pay all costs associated with the extension and maintenance, so...
So, it doesn't matter?
The administration would say, if we're going to extend sewer to you, you need a 12-inch line. It'll cost you this much money, and the tap fees will be whatever.
And the recoup will kick in, as we've seen in some other...
Then, why do we have number four at all?
Well, I guess it was, we were trying to mirror what was on in water extensions, and possibly because there, I think there were places where a large facility would have a negative, I mean, would surcharge the pumping station. I was thinking mainly more on Westview area, because I thought I remembered when we were doing that, when we were talking about that larger annexation, or at least service area out there, people were concerned about...
United Apartments.
United Apartments. Were concerned about the Westview Pump Station and its ability to handle. Now, that may be just old business, or, again, maybe I wasn't, maybe it's the PUD problem.
Well, I think another difference is, in the sewer one, you're talking about the owner agreeing to be annexed, and that's not spelled out in the water extension that is existing. So, if we're actually, if they're going to be annexed, and they're going to be city taxpayers, then maybe there's the assumption that it continues to pay for itself. And maybe we don't need four in that case, if they're actually going to come into the city.
But then, the other thing you'd want with four is that they can't just say, well, my neighbor needs a two, and I'm just going to put his pipe in there and add it to the, I mean, so...
Right.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
But see, number four in water extensions doesn't say one dwelling, it says one dwelling unit per property, which we've upheld in several instances that I can remember. And I guess this would, one dwelling unit or...
Or other business structure.
Whatever we're going to call that thing.
Or other business structure, something like that?
Or just business unit. One unit per property, the same way as it says before, and take out the word dwelling.
One unit per property works. Then, when we annex them, of course, with the B zones, it's not as... it's not as critical, but if it were going into an R zone, single structure per lot would be in place, which is, I think, why we have the water extension the way it is. But who can remember 10 years ago? Goodness.
Because probably every...
I can't remember too bad.
It's been busy, we couldn't.
Boy, boy, you fumble and they're right on you.
Let's bring the bat in.
I was just thinking, nobody mentioned the bat.
Okay, so do we have a, pretty much a plan with the assumption that, number one, the issues would be resolved by meter reading and agreement with them, the other water provider, should that be a problem? Number four, tap is limited to one unit per property, per lot, per parcel? Do we use the word parcel, or do we use lot? Oh, well, and...
Property's up in the top part.
Okay. And then seven is, owner agrees to annexation of property within a two-year period from the date of adoption of the ordinance. Then I'm going to ask Gary, or ask Debbie to ask Gary, what happens if they're not annexed? How can we tighten this? Could we ratchet it with a 20% after two years surcharge, just to keep them going? My only thing is...
You know, compared to paying income tax on a business, though, that might be a small amount.
Right.
They may be only too glad to pay the 20% instead of...
Yeah. Well, number seven, I think, maybe we should say from, because of the timing, because of getting financing, because of all of the above, maybe we need to, well, I guess we'll just, unless you can think of a way to change it. They could ask for an extension, and that would be probably an administrative possibility.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't address whether you're talking about the completion of the annexation process or the beginning, because the actual process takes a while. Maybe that's what it needs to say, that it must be underway within two years.
Undertake annexation, agrees to undertake, use your word, undertake annexation of the property within two-year period from the date of adoption of the ordinance.
Or initiate.
Initiate's good.
It's better.
Undertake is probably not so hot.
I'm not really overjoyed with that, but that'll work. I mean, the idea is you could sit there and initiate for a long, long time, you know? I mean, two years, it falls apart, and other two years go by and it falls apart.
Well, I guess the bottom line is, and I think I've heard other people, I certainly heard the administration say this, that we start talking about a place like the gas company, which was outside the city. I mean, we're not going to provide service to them, are we, unless they are annexed? Isn't that correct?
Yes.
I mean, that's what I think I've heard you say.
Well, you're right. The other point that's there is that what you're doing is a one-sided contract, in essence, because all you're doing is passing an ordinance permitting a tap, and then saying, you must be annexed. Where's the agreement from the person? I mean, I would have something in there to say, you must have a binding contract, or we've called it, for the commercial properties, we've gone through and done a development agreement, which, in that, you can fit then that development agreement to the particular circumstances that are there a little better. But it would bother me that, because what happens if you do this with a residential property, the person says, oh, yeah, I'll do that, hooks it in, all their problems solved, they're able to sell the house for $10,000 more than they, they do, and they move, and the new owner knows nothing about this agreement. They thought, wow, wait a minute, this was outside of the city when I bought it. I wasn't, you know? So you have to have some kind of, in my mind, when you do the extension, you're going to have to have some kind of agreement in writing with whoever owns that property. And that probably could apply to even extensions of water, too, because we're just doing this on faith, and that doesn't always work.
Yeah, and this one, we're not requiring, in the water, we don't require annexation, and this one we do, right? Big difference, some difference, maybe? I've got it down there. Development agreement required under seven. So we'll probably be down to, talk to you about language.
Right. And I think we'd want Gary involved in it, because at minimal, then under some of these scenarios, you at least, maybe you might have, don't have a criminal conflict, but you at least have a civil suit that you could then go after if it was a business and say, oh, you should have produced X number of tax dollars for the city, or same thing with the property taxes of someone even residential. The city should have been receiving revenue, so you have damages that are real. And so you have a civil suit process because you do have an agreement. At least that would be my non-lawyer interpretation. But at least that's why we run it through the law director. But I think there, there has to be an acknowledgement and an agreement, other than the person in our minutes saying, oh, yes, I'll do that.
And maybe the surcharge could keep stepping up until the annexation is completed. After two years, after three years, you know, maybe there's some other built-in mechanism, too, that it gets more expensive.
Just double it. Double it every so many years.
I think I have the intent, everybody summarized, and I'll have Debbie sec, have a second meeting with Gary and the mayor concerning options. Okay? We'll see how it works. Okay.
I have a miscellaneous question.
Okay, please.
I got an email from Alvy regarding the revisions to the landscaping regulations. I think that that would, did that go to all council members?
No. Okay.
I see the minutes from Monday's meeting showing that those revisions should come up on the next regular council agenda, and I just want to make sure we've got the right language. It looks like there were two different ones circulating, and I may have sent the wrong one to you for the committee discussion. I'm not sure how that went in the discussion on Monday.
We just talked about the 50% of the auditor's value, and people discussed that mechanism. So was that one, that was the one, right?
I think there was some more detailed language, and there had been so much back-and-forth email that I'll need to clarify with Alvy and make sure that we've got the right language that the tree commission wanted us to be looking at. Was she here Monday?
Yeah.
Yes. She's the one who presented it.
Right.
Okay.
So it's probably the latest addition.
Okay. She stopped in to see me today. She, the short 50% phrase was what was returned to the tree commission after being reviewed by the law director, and as I understand it, without any comments. So she's supplying us with the total, with language that the tree commission itself adopted, and just asking that it be, she wants to make sure that it was reviewed also. So when we come up with an ordinance and by the law director, she'd like the complete language to be offered as a possibility, but if, if that, if he thinks not, then they're fine with the shorter.
The clock is ticking, though, and I just put it up the way we had it. So should we ask him?
Are we gonna, I'm sorry, I...
I thought we were just putting it up, but we could wait till January. I should have consulted you. I'm sorry.
No, I, she just, she stopped to see me because she stopped to see you first and you weren't home.
I know. I found it in my drawer. Should we wait on this?
And my comment to her was, we probably wouldn't get to it till the first of the year anyway.
That makes sense. Let's just do that.
I just want to make sure that we get it right. When I saw that email, it looked like there was another step, probably, before we read it.
Yeah. That's, that's all she's asking.
Okay, I'll write now on this note. Okay, there's some other business I have to attend to, but who's, who's next?
I have just two miscellaneous comments. In your mailboxes, council members received copies of two proposed resolutions. One supporting the recommendation of the Stroud's Run Task Force, and the other ordinance, this is actually an ordinance, I'm sorry, a copy of a proposed ordinance granting a revocable license to allow, allow the development of the continuing care retirement community. These are just for you to review the language, not necessarily, certainly not with the ordinance for the revocable license. Am I intending to bring that up at the next meeting? But I just want you to see the language that we have to this point.
Okay.
That's it.
Are you next, Paul?
Transportation Committee, reconstruction of Pomeroy Road. Rick, this is something that's...
Right. You have already passed an ordinance earlier, or actually late in 2004, I think, that authorized the expenditure, appropriated the engineering. It also then authorized the project up to, I forget the exact amount. We're now at the stage with ODOT that they've approved the design plans. It's going to be a base bid plus an alternate for a slip area that slipped a little, but, or, you know, isn't damaging the road yet. ODOT is saying they don't want to pay for that because it's not damaged the road yet. So I wanted to do it as an alternate, so that if the bids did come in low, we might want to take that as an option. But none of the $755,000 of ODOT has been appropriated yet. So this would appropriate that $755,000 that ODOT's putting into the project, and would slightly change the authority, because what I'd like to do until we get the bids is just add their money to the $94,000 we've already spent in engineering costs and appropriated. And that gives us a little more, more money than just spending the $755,000. It allows us to do a couple of those improvements the residents asked for. And I might not spend it all, or I might be back to you saying, well, we got the bids, and just for a few dollars more, we could also maybe fix the slip. But that's going, I think the bid opening on that's scheduled for January 19th. So that's my timeline.
Okay, so this is, this is amending the, it says 07504.
Right.
And that went up to 822, 822,000. And you, are, we're going to change that to 847,000? Is that what you're saying?
Right. And also appropriate in the 2006, the 755,000, that's probably only going to be on paper. ODOT will probably pay the contractor directly, but every time that happens, the auditor has to post it to our books. So it's the same thing, is we're spending the money.
Okay. And all the engineering's been done right now?
Engineering, yeah, all the engineering and preparation of bid documents, all that stuff is done and paid for. So we will have construction engineering yet to come. And that has to be by a firm that didn't do the design now under ODOT rules. So you have to hire a separate firm for it.
Okay. And I know that the Pomeroy Road people met at least twice with...
Yes.
Andy and...
And the engineer.
Okay, and the engineer. Okay. And they're happy with it, or fairly happy with it?
They're fairly happy with it, I think. I mean, those that showed up, I think.
They basically are just anxious to see it start happening.
Like it done.
The slip, is that the one that's like on the steepest part of the hill, on the left-hand side going up? Is that where you mean?
It's, it's more on the right-hand side, as I recall.
Going up?
On the uphill side?
I think it's on the uphill side.
On the right-hand side, just past where the houses are next to the road?
I think so. I'd have to check to be sure.
I thought it was on the left-hand side.
Because we're, because the base bid includes the new culvert underneath the road in that location. And I believe some, you know, work in through there, but that's not, as my recollection from, it's been a while since I've talked to him about it, that I don't think that's, that's the slip area that he's referring to.
Where Warren Road is, or is, there was another place that was discussed, and that was way up closer to the intersection.
Pleasant to know, want to give me?
Well, there was a culvert discussed that was close to the intersection that ODOT did not include.
That wasn't, okay.
Okay. So, members of Transportation Committee, we put this up? Yes? Okay. So the...
Debbie?
Yes?
I just have a procedural question. This is amending the '04 appropriation ordinance, and then talking about what will be appropriated. So this will be reflected, then, in the appropriation ordinance that we have yet to do for next year?
Right. Yes.
Okay. I just wasn't sure, procedural, how that...
Well, procedurally, see, the auditor cannot anticipate the funds until the year they're expected to be received. So she couldn't put in, this is a 2005 appropriations, because there wouldn't be enough money there to cover it. So she has, so we have to do it in the 2006, but that allows me, through this ordinance, just to, just like the salt and the other items you approved earlier, I've already put that in the '06 appropriation balance. So it's, it's covered that way. But a lot of those things, I need authority to do, because they're of such a dollar amount that I can't, even if it was budgeted, I'd still have to come back to you and get authority to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, those are all interrelated. I mean, and I think two other things I'm working on right now. One is in capital improvement funds. When we, when council approved the south side restroom for $60,000, because we had $20,000 something from Nature Works, that didn't get posted in that I can find yet anywhere. And meanwhile, I've come back to you and bought police cruisers and the fire department stuff, and now I don't have $55,000 left in the unappropriated balance. So probably what I will do on that, I'll check with the auditor tomorrow, I wasn't able to talk to her today, is just include that in the '06 appropriation ordinance. Because, again, we have enough, and we've already signed the $5,000 agreement for the architectural services, and that's, that's covered. But if I run into a problem, I may be asking for a change to the appropriation, not, not the '06 appropriation ordinance, but I think there's another ordinance somewhere in route that's got some appropriations in it. May have to do that. The other thing I wanted to bring you up to date on, and I haven't gotten response back from the law director yet on it, but I just got with him yesterday about it. There's some question on the University Estates annexation with regard to Armitage Road. Obviously, your resolution that you passed, everything that's within the bounds of the annexation would become the responsibility of the city, because it's an existing township road. And we'd have to assume that, because we would be the taxing district that would receive any of the taxes. Where the question comes in is because two other property owners did not wish to be annexed, at the end of the road, there is a section of road, oh, maybe 850 to 1,000 feet, that's, a portion of it, one side would be in the city, the other out, and then the annexation ends because of another property owner, and so both sides would be out. And it doesn't make, there's a section, and I have to look at my notes, in the new annexation law, they had a section that, that was one of the things you were to try to avoid doing, was splitting a township road, make, from a maintenance standpoint. It makes a lot of sense to me, because it doesn't continue on to anywhere, it dead ends. So we have to work something out with the township trustees on that, or maybe the law director will say, gee, this really should be in the resolution, the council should pass. Of course, the public hearing on, it's Tuesday. So I just wanted to alert you that I'm working with the law director, and you may have something else to add to the agenda Monday.
We just have to be sure that we track it all really clearly, so it doesn't take years of deep searching to figure it out later.
Well, I don't want this one to get turned down like the others, others, and then you have to do this process. Again, we're too far along here. And that's the only glitch that I'm seeing. It was one that the county pointed out, too, as I didn't see it. So we want to take care of it before the fact, if at all possible.
The public hearing is on the county side. They're doing a public hearing for the annexation.
They're doing a public hearing next Tuesday at 1:30. They have then up to 30 days to make their determination for release. So we could go there and say, we're working it out. I did talk to Dick Shaw, one of the township trustees, tonight about it. He says, we've got agreements like this all over the place. It's because there's a lot of the roads that are shared, in essence, or, it's just like Elliotsville Road, we have so far, but if their plows go out to pile the rest of Elliotsville Road, and they see we haven't gotten down to it, they just drop the plow. But they can do it, same thing as we do when we do Blackburn, we go all the way to the turnaround at Stagecoach. We pile part of their road. I mean, that's just, it's just normal, because it makes sense. But this one will require some kind of formal agreement, is what, what my understanding is.
For Armitage?
Yes.
We're talking about the existing Armitage Roads that is on the toe of the slope, right? Not the new one that's by the railroad tracks?
Well, at this stage, we're only, we're talking only about the one that has been accepted by the township trustees through the county engineer, because that's all that's there now. There have been discussions about, with the county engineer, the township trustees, and ourselves, about the relocation of that road, but I don't think it's occurred yet.
I've seen some dirt piled up.
So if it does occur, then that would follow the same things you have within, you're already within the ordinance, about accepting, or the resolution, that you would accept roads through the normal process that we would do. They'd have to put up the maintenance bond, they'd have to build our specifications, all those kinds of things.
Well, I don't have any problem, I just think it would be really bad if they took the one that's holding up the slope out, but that's just my opinion. But the other argument in favor of this is that the road does end up at our well field, doesn't it?
Right, it does, and we need access there, too, anyway.
Right, so there's, there's a really good argument for us to win it.
There is, Wayne and I have talked about that, there is. We want access to our well field, anyway, and that, that is the road we take to get there, to the Armitage site. So it makes sense to maintain that ourselves, anyway.
Absolutely.
Any other miscellaneous for Transportation? Sarah, no? Nothing? Carol, any? We're done, then?